Hey, this is our reorganization meeting. Among other things we'll discuss tonight, so we'll start with the open public meeting statement. This is a regular meeting of the Fairhaven Planning Board. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act. At the time of the board reorganization in January of the past year, the board adopted its regular meeting schedule for the year. Notice of the schedule was sent to and published in the Asbury Park Press and the Two River Times on February ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. That that notice was also posted on the Bolton Board in Pearl Hall and has remained continuously posted there as required by the statute. The copy of the notice is and has been available to the public and is on file in the office of the borough clerk. Copy of the notice has also been sent to such members of the public who have requested such information in accordance with the statute. Adequate notice having been given, the board secretary is directly to include this statement in the minutes of the meeting. So before we do roll call, I think the the I think the order of the meeting probably demands that we we do oaths of office and new and and for new and reappointed members and then do the roll call is probably the sort of better practice, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll start with a salute to the flag.
Fudge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and so now we'll start with with the oaths of office.
The folks who read through oath, please stand. Let me ask you to state your name and mine.
Hi, David Payolo.
Diana Anton.
Michael Victor. Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
You solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and in this state. And to the governments established in the United States and in this state. Under the authority of the people. Under the authority of the people. And that I will faithfully and partially and justly perform all the duties of the Fairhaven Planning Board.
The duties of planning board class four member.
Class two member.
Duties of the planning board class four member according to the best my ability.
According to the best my ability.
So how we got. So how we got. Welcome aboard. Please sign just above your names and turn the little to the open form.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So so now we'll go through the nomination. Oh, do the roll. I'm sorry. Yeah, that's right. That's what I said. Do the roll call first. Thank you.
Here.
Diana.
Here.
Charles.
Here.
Nica.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Stanston.
And.
Bailey.
Here. Okay, so so now we'll go through nominations and appointments. We're going to nominate chair and vice chair, board secretary, board attorney, board engineer, board planner. We're going to approve the meeting date, calendar, and then approval of the newspaper. So we'll go through those official actions and then go through the the administrative items for the evening.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Fred Roll as to return as chair of the Fair Planning Board.
Second.
Mrs. Butt, yes. Mr. Mill.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey.
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Nicka.
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Dantman, yes. And Mr. Bailey.
Yes. Thank you. I'd like to nominate Dave Payolo as vice chair.
Second.
Yes. Mr. Mill.
Yes.
I've seen.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Mr. Nicka.
Yes.
Yes.
Stanston, yes.
Yes.
Thank you. And for the, thank you, Dave. And for for the appointment, for the appointments, can we do all the appointments and then and then do a roll call? Or should we? We've got to do each one individually?
Do each one individually.
Okay. So we 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 appoint Sheila Olson as board secretary. Second.
Bush, yes. Mr. Mill.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Stanston, yes.
Yes.
And then we are going to nominate, well, I have some notes I wrote. But she was help. Okay, so we we're going to to nominate Doug Kovats from Kenny Gross Kovats and Barton. Second.
Bush, yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Nicka.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Antonin, yes. And Mr. Bailey.
Yes. Thank you all.
For the appointment of of engineer, we're going to appoint Rich Cardella as board engineer. Second.
Bush, yes. Mr. Mill.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Mr. Nicka.
Yes.
Mr. Anderson.
Yes.
Mr. Dantman, yes. Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Thank you.
And for board planner, we are going to nominate Michael Sullivan from Clark, Caton, and Hints. Second.
Bush, yes. Mr. Mill.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Charles.
Yes.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Stanston, yes. And Bailey.
Yes.
Okay, we also in terms of, so just want to make everybody aware for 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 board planner. We have another planner for the for the affordable housing.
Yes.
But I don't think we not, we don't have to, that's more of like us.
I don't think we.
You don't, that's not an appointment, I my understanding. Contract, right?
That that we have access to, but the.
Okay, but you should just enter into the notes or into the minutes that there is a planner retained by the count, I'm sorry, retained by the borough to aid and counsel on affordable housing.
Who is it?
It is Mike Edwards and the name of the firm is Serenian Edwards Uzak and No.
And actually, Pat, you appear.
Right. Yes, yes. So the next item is the is the meeting dates for two thousand and twenty-five. They were part of the the email distributed prior to prior to the meeting. I I'm happy to, it's probably a good idea, just write they read it off, we'll read it off one more time, just so anybody knows.
Yeah, we've already vetted all this.
We've vetted this, yeah, pretty pretty good. So it's like generally a third Tuesday. So it's January twenty-third, I'm sorry, January twenty-first today, February eighteenth, March eighteenth, April eighth, May twentieth, June ten, July fifteenth, August nineteenth, September sixteenth, October twenty-first, November eighteenth, September sixteen. And our two thousand and twenty-six reorganization will be January twenty. And so I'll motion to approve this this calendar as as previously reviewed in our, I I think we've done it in two meetings now. So second.
Mr. Bush, yes.
That, me, this one?
Olson.
Oh.
Okay.
Yeah.
I voted this one? I didn't vote in general.
You are the.
You are on, yeah.
Okay.
Well, this one you do vote on.
Yeah. Pardon? It would need to be sworn in yet. Oh, yeah.
Yes, we will. Shame on us. Shame on us. Shame on us.
It goes along with this liaison.
Was replacing.
That's it.
So that would be.
It's not an oath, right?
It's not a liaison.
No, it's not a liaison. It's a class two member.
Right, that was one.
He's a member because Betty was a member and so he's replacing.
I don't know what that means, but.
We'll take care, we'll take, we'll do this and then we will swear him out.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, sounds good.
Mr. Mill.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Mr. Nicka.
Yes.
Mr. Anderson.
Yes.
Stanston.
Yes.
And Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
You want to swear him in now or no?
Sure.
Okay. Thanks, friend. Thanks, though.
Yes, I'll get one and leave.
You can tell them.
Okay.
You can read along. Please don't say tell something to me. You should read along. Okay. I.
Adrian.
I, Brian Olson. Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States. Solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, the Constitution of the State of New Jersey. And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same. That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same. And to the governments established in the United States and to the governments established in the United States and in this state and in this state. And the authority of the people and the authority of the people. And that I will faithfully and partially and justly perform. And I will faithfully and partially and partially and justly justly perform all the duties of the of a planning board member according to the best my ability. All the. All the duties, all the duties of the planning board in the best my ability. Very good. Awesome. We're going to have, well, we will have you sign one of them and I'll confirm them. Okay? But you're efficient. This is just the memorialization.
Okay.
Sure.
So I'd like to motion that our our official newspapers will be the Two River Times, Star Ledger, and APP. Asbury Park. Second.
Mr. Bush, yes. Mr. Mill.
Yes.
Mr. Mill.
Yes.
Mr. Mill.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
For Anderson.
Yes.
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 Okay, so let's move on to the December seventeen minutes. I wasn't present. Wait, was it that? Yeah. I meant, yeah, yeah, I meant, so I was not, so I.
Wasn't quite the same then. Yeah. President Bush, talk. You will.
Oh.
I I read through the minutes. They seem complete to me, Jill, so I'll make a motion to, I'll make a motion to approve these.
I'll second.
Yes. Mr. Mill.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Nicka.
Yes.
And Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Okay, so so what we want to, we want to, number one, continue our discussion on the the master plan reexamination. There are two things I think we need to take care of first and foremost. I think the first is Andrew, Dave and I appeared before the zoning board about two weeks ago, a week ago, to give an update on on where we were in the in the in the in the in the process and to provide some color as to some of the things we were thinking about. Solicited some feedback. And so we'll go through what we went over with with the zoning board to so so that the full boards informed of what we talked about. And then, second, we we identified certain elements in the in the master plan to be reexamined. And so we had land use, housing, circulation, utilities, conservation, recreation, and open space. And we've had some, so Neil was not re renamed for the for the planning board. So that element is now open. We're going to need somebody on the board to take take charge of that element. And then David Bordalon resigned. And so unfortunately, David David said he had just too many other commitments and and had to unfortunately resign, which is unfortunate. And so the conservation, recreation, and open space element of the of the master plan is also, we're going to need somebody to to volunteer for that piece of it. The other thing before we we talk about what what was what was spoken about the zoning board is I think also the there's this conversation about are we doing the full rewrite or a or a reexam? And so you you know, I I think we need to put that discussion to bed and and sort of have a formal adoption of how we're going to approach this. And then I think move forward with getting the our planner actually plugged in. He's, we we haven't had the planner attend these meetings yet because I feel like we're trying to get organized ourselves. And so I think once we have a have a clear indication of which planning board members are going to head up the the elements that that we feel need to be reexamined. We can add more later, of course, as we go through the process, but I think we all feel that these were the 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 areas that that needed the most attention. We can then, we should, you know, actually get a contract, get an engagement letter, get all of that official information from the planner so we can get the 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 process. We can actually start making progress on on certain of these things. So let's let's start with that. I I mean, I I I you know, I'd like to hear from everybody, but I I have my opinion on on what we should do. I I don't know that we want to do a full rewrite, but I I think I think the money would be sort of better spent on, you know, diving deeper into each of these elements and and making sure we really get it right and really get enough public input and participation in the development of these elements. And and you know, doing a full rewrite, I think, would devote would divert a substantial amount of time and resources, not just monetary resources, but also our attentions on on stuff that's just is probably not really relevant anymore, doesn't even really matter. As as much as a full rewrite might be, you know, a good practice, I or it's just, I think, given the the realities of of time and money, it's probably better spent during the the reexam. And so I'll just leave it at that and look for for people to comment and and, you know, agree, disagree, yeah.
So the the zoning board conversation, was there any input provided by them?
There there was. So I I can talk about what we went over at the zoning board. So so the the zoning board, I think, was that they wanted to know kind of what we had done so far. And and so we went over, Dave, Andrew and I went over kind of how we have approached the process so far, which was we put together a really high level timeline. And then we we talked about, but never can, but never concluded upon this this notion of a a rewrite or a reexam. We selected different elements that we thought were, you you know, embodying the areas that needed the most attention. We had, we we put people in charge of those areas. And and we were going to then begin, you 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 know, begin the process of of the reexamination. And so we went over that, we went over what we felt was important about the business district and the different elements that would be impacted by the the guidance and direction we'd like to give with regards to the business district and the and what we would want to see happen there, what we feel the public wants to see happen there. And there was a number of ideas proffered by the zoning board about, you know, different lookbooks and other other things that would provide more visual to what, when we talk about what we want to have as downtown and and what it means in terms of aesthetic character and you you know, how that would manifest inside the the reexam and and what, you you know, how we would, what we would talk about. I Andrew, Dave, anything else to add to that?
I would jump back just a second to the rewrite versus the reexam. To that conversation, I think, you know, it we kind of in the zoning get together, we we
We did talk about that.
Talked about that. And I think some of the comments were, well, you know, do we, do we want to, like, I guess the comment was made that, like, is is rewriting it fully doing it right, so to speak? And, you know, I I think we had all kind of been thinking of wrapping our heads around the idea of a reexam versus a rewrite. And I I actually personally think the reexam the version is is more cost effective. But I will say that I am shocked at the legal cost estimate differences. And that's just for the people who weren't here. What we heard was that a rewrite would cost like something about like a hundred and forty thousand dollars in legal fees, whereas the reexam would only cost thirty thousand.
I would correct that on legal fees.
Plan it, no?
We're not saying that.
Sorry. Plan it, please. Sorry, sorry, Doug. So.
Want to make that very clear.
Administrative fees. I am sorry. No, I appreciate you clarifying. No, but I I actually, I'm thinking about that, like, a hundred and ten thousand dollar difference. Like, is there not like an AI that can take the original document and like, you know, synthesize it into right? And so how do we get to a hundred grand all the same time?
Do we know, though, that that thirty thousand is a rewrite that we accept, a reexam that we expected to be? Like, what, how broadly, you know, or I guess backwards, right?
The way, the way. For your planner, when you speak to them.
Right.
As to what they, there are certain, and I could speak to some of that to get back to some of your your questions as to what happened with zoning board. I think you're going to find certain things are going to have to revamp. That's not certainly looking at the elements. What is the change in your demographics? You know, how many new buildings, things that you had, that you can see in your other master planning? How is broken up? There's not going to be a lot of difference in your in in your history, other than maybe what's happened in recent history update. There's not going to be much difference in your soil composition, those kinds of things. You're going to see some things that, I don't know if it lends itself to AI, but that we alluded to when I think I gave you a sort of a a very, very pre-top level overview. What has changed in the legislative landscape that impacts us? There are certain statutes that say your land you sell now needs to address this. And it doesn't, as I said before, it doesn't need to solve it, but you need to now take into consideration things that change in stormwater changes with the electronic, electric vehicles, those types of things. That's going to be something that's brand new, that's going to be put in. For then, then what have you done with affordable housing and affordable housing? And again, affordable housing, we're going to be doing sooner than later because that because of that timetable. So you're going to have the affordable housing every day. Changes with regard to things we have done on ordinance. You know, we have, we have changed some things. We've had some sustainable neighborhoods and some pieces of legislation that the municipality has done. I made some notes myself. I'll read you. So the on those things, so you're going to have those things in a rewrite that wouldn't be necessarily a whole reexam. I'm sorry, would be part of the reexam, but wouldn't be part of the whole master plan. But and and again, that's just to bring you up to speed. And then a lot of it that you really can't do by AI is what do you want? You know, are are you happy with the downtown right now? Are you not happy with the downtown as a result of some of the things that we don't recommend? Say, we don't, we kind of like where the downtown is. We've heard we heard some things at the zoning board meeting, going back to what this said. Some members said, you know, that at this end, it's more of a more historical for us here. I think we had some discussions as to costs of what you do and we're, you know, missed opportunities and we'll have a, we'll speak to that. And also that what the zoning board did also, they also gave us their latest examination report of what they did for two thousand and twenty-three and their engineer provided, I think we can get this out to me, some things that he was looking at by way of ordinances. Now, that may not be something that you're going to look at for your master plan. It may be something that we allude to, and then your ordinances go back to the to the municipality to put on books.
Yeah, the the way I interpreted it, and then we'll ask Chris to to make some comments about the costs. The way I had always interpreted the the difference in in costs was what was, you you know,
Ask for what's back.
The thirty thousand, I think, is just the the kind of entry fee to play, right? Like, it's it's going to be like, that's going to be the planner fee and and and, you you know, some some professional costs as well. And then depending on what we do and how the process moves along, there's going to be additional fees, probably and additional professionals that are needed to help us get to where we need to go in each of the elements. And so the way I viewed it was and and Chris, correct me if if you feel this is different or you feel it's not a valid way to look at it. Is the hundred and forty, like, we may ultimately end up spending, I hope we don't end up spending a hundred and forty thousand, but we may ultimately, you you know, end up spending that amount anyway. But that money would would be sort of more would be more logically distributed across the elements where we felt we needed the 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 expertise. And and so, Chris, if you want, yeah, if you want to add to to what I said, but that's kind of how I I viewed the difference in costs.
All right, so real quick, I'll just introduce myself to camera. Chris, you're the administrator here at Kerr Haven. And again, you know, the meeting we had, this wants to join, but it was the the zoning board meeting where several planning board members were there. I thought it was actually a pretty productive meeting. And a couple of things, and it almost seemed like it was a preamble to maybe discussing the master plan with some of the metrics we talked about in the zoning board meetings discussed basically what people were looking for for variances. And actually, I think it was a five-year plan, but we have to go back to the minutes and take a look at as far as what people were looking for for expansions. It was interesting that, you know, we thought that maybe more people were looking for home offices and everything, you know, after the COVID pandemic, as more people were home. We found really in the end that a lot of construction basically was the same prior to the pandemic than what we had after the pandemic, and people just looked for more space, and they really were looking for creating home offices. So that was a very interesting metric that came out of it that I thought was pretty interesting, that that kind of lent in a little bit to what our master plan is. And I think, you know, Doug brings up a great point. It's really what does the town want? What are we looking to do? I mean, our last master plan was written, you know, the first, the real true update that we had of the master plan was nineteen ninety-one. So we're looking at thirty, thirty-four years ago now. And now we're in two thousand and twenty-five. The last reexam we had was in two thousand and sixteen, based off of a two thousand and fifteen survey that we did that our current planner, Michael Sullivan, did, which I actually, to be honest, take a look at, is actually a very good reexam that we had. And and really, again, just just to brief the board on it, and I'm sure Doug can probably add a little bit more. Reexam is basically looking at, okay, what points did we hit? What points did we hit? And what and where do we have to go? And I think that's a good point that really the board should take a look at. Have we met the mark of everything that we needed to meet in nineteen ninety-one? Or are there still places that we need to go? And if we have met every place that we need to make the mark in nineteen ninety-one, is there further places that we need to go? Doug brought up a very interesting point, you know, versus, you know, update and reexamine was, do do we want to maybe take a look at a reexamine with addendums that go along with it? You know, do we do we need to do the full update and rewrite the entire thing and maybe look at, you know, again, hundred and forty thousand, hundred and thirty thousand is the ballpark, you know? It's better to overestimate than underestimate, so you don't run out of money. The only person that's really going to be able to give us an idea of what that cost would be would be our planner to determine what that cost. But but we, I think all of us will look at this reasonably prudent people and say that a reexam is probably going to be significantly cheaper just because of the man hours than what it's going to be to do an update. So taking a look at whether it's thirty thousand or a hundred and thirty, or maybe it's forty thousand versus a hundred and twenty, we're probably looking at, there's going to be significantly more man hours involved in an update than versus a reexam. Okay, so we look at that. But going back to it, you know, and Doug brought up a very interesting point, too, maybe it was a hybrid model. Do we want to do a reexam and and identify maybe addendums we could put? And I don't want to misquote you, but I think I've probably had that about right. What you said, yeah. So maybe having addendums on there, such as electric vehicles, or such as different points that didn't exist in nineteen ninety-one that exist here in two thousand and twenty-five, and that may be something that the board might want to look at as well. My personal opinion and taking a look at it, and again, you know, I look at dollars and cents, and I, my responsibility for administrators how we can make the best, you know, fiscal decisions for the town as far as what our budget. And I only have so much for a budget to go with, so there's only so much money I have to do, so I have to make the best decisions for that. But I also have to make the best decisions for the best interest of the town as well, and that's that balancing act that I have to come into work and think about every day. I think the best way to take a look at that is probably to engage our planner that we have and determine really what the costs are going to look like. And what, how many man hours are going to be involved in doing an update? And, you know, and taking a look at, you know, is a survey, would a reexam be sufficient to bring us, you know, up? You know, up maybe for the next ten years? Or maybe a reexam with some addendums, as you know, Doug had mentioned at the zoning board meeting, you know, to identify some issues that didn't exist. Maybe that might be the best too, and that might be the best, is the most fiscally responsible to the town, but also the best interest of the town as well. But maybe we might look at, listen, we've hit every single mark that we can in the nineteen ninety one master plan through all our reexaminations. And maybe it's time we do an update, and that's something really the board should look at. The one thing I will applaud this board on, and having been a planning board member in Rumsen twenty years ago, so I I sat in those same seats you sat in. On the other side of Buena Vista. Um the fact that you're looking at this early, and and that makes life a lot easier for me as of our administrator as far as planning. This is a twenty twenty six obligation that we have to, we have to follow. The fact that we're looking at this now in January twenty twenty five. Where it's really headed game to really make the determination. So we have time on our side. Not a lot, but we have time on our side to determine what's going to be best interest of the town and the best interest as far as the budget for the town as well. Um make that determination, but my suggestion would be. Really, we take a look at, maybe we bring Michael Sullivan, our planner, and determine what's going to be best and what could be the best, you know, you know, response for the board to to vote on. But but knowing reexam is going to be less man hours than a full update, yeah, I mean, there's going to be a significant cost difference, and probably looking at that. You know, that ratio that you said between thirty and a hundred and thirty is probably significant, probably out of this.
From your budget perspective, there's a hundred thousand dollar difference. Uh a hill to climb that we should not.
Well, yes, hundred, listen, for me, if I could do it for fifteen thousand, I'd do it for fifteen thousand, I'd love to, you know. Um and again, you have to take a look at, you know, needs versus wants. You know, um there's a lot of things I'd want that I know I don't have the money to do. I mean, we take a look at, you know, even, you know, last year, you know, I heard our trash contract. You know, our existing trash contract that we have before we had to make modifications was a ninety seven percent increase. You know, we had to make hard decisions to go to every other week recycling, still with a fifty one percent increase. So, yes. Are there funds that, you know, have been absorbed for other things that are out of our control? Absolutely. Um do we have in cap and out of cap resp- um expenses that, you know, that we have no control over? Sure, you know, those things exist. If I could say, if I could save a hundred thousand dollars, I'd love to save a hundred thousand dollars. That way we can. Offset other expenses that have increased. However, if there is a need that we need to actually do that, we justify that need. You know, then that maybe, just like we do with our, you know, our trash permit and all that, sometimes we do have to spend a little bit more, but. I think the best thing we do is have actually having the data and having the, you know, the investigation to look at. What our town needs and how we hit every mark out there, you know, it allows us to be informed conscious to make that decision. That's that's my take on it. That kind of makes the bad answer or?
No, yeah, I think that was that was really helpful. I think the thing I would say. Is is that as I as I looked at, okay, so I I gotta go tomorrow morning, say, make a phone call to Michael Sullivan and say, hey, we need you at the next planning board meeting because. We want to discuss the contract for the master plan. The very next thing out of his, his first question is going to be, okay, are you doing, what are the parameters? That I I need to plan for so I can give you an engagement letter and an estimate of cost. And so I think. What we'll need to decide here tonight is, you know, I I think. We're we're already significantly down that road, is that we said, look, it's it's land use, housing. Circulation, utilities, conservation, recreation, open space, and then I think.
And affordable housing.
And affordable housing, um. It it how, yeah, land use housing and affordable housing, and and I think then there's. There are other, I I think statutory requirements for that have come up or or have developed over. Uh time that were probably required to address in this master plan reexamination. And so I think we we need to have that. You you know, we need to determine what those items are. And and then give him that, those parameters for which to come back and and make the estimate.
Yeah, and I and I look at everything through, let's say, a SWOT analysis, strengths, weaknesses, options, threats, you know, and taking a look at all of those and bringing SWOT analysis of what's going to work best. For the town, you know, through all of us, I I think better, it's better to have, you know, an informed conscience going into this and then making that determination. Again, yeah, what I'd love to tell you, yeah, saving a hundred thousand dollars move forward, but maybe that's not the best for the town, and that could open us up to liabilities down the road. I'd rather look at every option we have, and then maybe we can come back to meetings from now, and make a decision as far as we're at, you know. I'd love to say, let's do thirty thousand, but we don't know, we don't know.
Question, is is the master plan rewrite or exam, is that in cap or out of cap, do you know?
That would be in cap.
That would be in cap, so that's, that makes it a little bit more restrained. If it's in cap. And then what's the, what's the ramification if we've missed the deadline, just for to understand?
So, interesting enough, we did miss the deadline on the last reexamination that happened in two thousand fifteen. Our reexamination was supposed to happen in two thousand fifteen. And we 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 had an extension and they did the survey in two thousand fifteen. And the reexamination was done in two thousand sixteen, so we actually had direction, we did miss the deadline then. Um just doing a little research on it as well. You know, I would probably have read read the uh.
Well, let me, but we get, we cut to the bottom line.
Yeah.
What what happens?
You lose the presumptive presumption of validity of your zoning and your plan, so that, you know, usually what happens, we go into court. Uh the other people already have two strikes against.
Got it, correct.
And we have a presumptive presumption of validity when we we discussed it. I gave this a brief overview, and maybe it's appropriate to just do a quick nutshell, you know. The power to zone given to the legislature, legislature gives it to us under the municipal land use law, provided you do a couple of things. One, have a master plan, two, reexamine it periodically. If you don't have a master plan, or you don't do your reexamination, if there is a challenge to your zoning ordinance, it's a challenge to your to your match. A challenge to any decisions named by the board, you lose the presumption of validity that originally. That we're usually cloaked in in the very beginning. That that takes a significant thing away from us.
So where does the tenure, if it's, if we have have a plan, which we did.
Our plan now is is going to, our deadline now is August twenty twenty six.
So you have to reexamine or redo every ten years?
Every ten years now, yes. Now, you know, have it completed by that time, uh if with the with the exception of this instance, and again, I want to be very clear. Because of the affordable housing. We're going to be, we have to do that almost a year in advance. That's going, our deadline there is June of twenty twenty five, and you, we have to have. I think we've already taken the first steps to say, yes, we're going to accept your numbers, now we start massaging those numbers. Now we need to come up with a land use settlement, now we need to come up with a revamp of affordable housing. That has to be done. By June of twenty twenty five, so in a sense, we're going to be doing our land use settlement earlier.
That's that's how I understood it, is the affordable housing piece, by the time we get. You you know, into the the. The actual doing of this. Like the the affordable housing piece would be kind of. Kind of done, we might have to amend some things or update it. Next year as we get closer to the August twenty sixth deadline, but for the most part. Affordable housing is kind of taken off the table in terms of what we have to do.
You may find that if if we do it just a reexamination, our reexamination report, if we. Done things according to the timetable, I think we're probably obliged to meet. Our reexamination report is going to say, because of the affordable housing required us to have this done in twenty twenty five. We are, you know, no more extensive modifications, other than identifying what we changed here are going to be dealt with during the reexamination.
So are you saying that the the, when the. When we finish the affordable housing in June, that counts as a master plan reexam?
In in a sense, it does, it's a, it's it really is.
And so basically, we wouldn't, I mean, now that we wouldn't do anything, but we don't, we would, statutorily, we don't have to do anything.
There may be maybe some additional things that you want to do with your land use settlement. I don't know when the last time we actually did our land use map was. I I don't know this. You know, your land use map is different than your zoning map. Your zoning map is, okay, here's your, here's your, you know, R thirty, here's your R forty, here are, here are your zones, here's your commercial zones. Your land uses, okay. Notwithstanding what your zones are, what are the actual uses on each one of these lot, because you may have some anomalies there. You're going to have to, and with the affordable housing. Because I know we have some overlays, we're going to need to revamp our land use map and our zoning map to. Account for the affordable housing, and then where we have our overlays, what is the actual use in those areas at that point in time? Um, you know, we have, you, in a sense, you identify the preexisting noninformant uses on your land use map. So there may be some element as to that that we're still doing.
Right.
Into the reexam, but at least as to the affordable housing and the housing element, I think we're going to be obliged to have that done. That may then just be a plug in to our reexam or.
Yeah, so makes sense.
Yeah, so do we know the cost? For updating the affordable plan, affordable housing plan, this June, June?
I don't know.
Yes, just just to give you some background of that, so our uh June twenty second special meeting, which is out on the board, has been posted. Uh five thirty Zoom meeting will be to adopt the uh number that the state said is our obligation for land use. Um our land attorney, Mike Edwards, um is working on this, and then he's, perhaps, we've had meetings with him in the process as far as moving forward. For that shoot deadline, so we've already, we've already budgeted for that, so we've already moved forward on that.
Just like ballpark, is that a ten thousand investment, is that thirty thousand investment?
I can take a look at that, um that would be a question I'd have to pull up from our budget. It's not that significantly high.
Less than ten.
Yeah, 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 as far as, as far as what that cost will be, it would be that. Again, that's separate from the planning board. So as far as what those costs will be, that comes out of our of our budget, but we have those professional fees with Mike Edwards, and as far as. Uh what the litigation will be as far as massaging, is as Doug said, massaging those numbers from ninety two down to what it's supposed to be.
Well, actually, 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 for twenty twenty one will be adopted, our, for, really, we adopted our affordable housing or housing element, I believe it was ordinance. Twenty twenty one dash oh six, which was creating the affordable housing zone. And then to amend our affordable housing was twenty twenty one dash one. Those on the board at that time may recall, we had a series of. Sort of seven different ordinances that we. We took care of all at once during one meeting, during one capital review, if you will. So it's really, it's really an update there from twenty one to the present now.
Right, so it's it's, sorry, I'm just, uh, the the sound, it sounds like it's an update. We're talking about an update, right, so the the conversation seems to evolve into a cost conversation. Not just, not just an outcome conversation, so I'm looking for is a little bit of. Do we know historically, do we know, like historically might be six years ago, historically might be what they quoted for this most recent work? Because we're talking about costs. Like how, like, I guess my my concern is. We get all locked in on thirty thousand for a reexam versus a hundred and something for a rewrite. We get into the reexam and it ends up being like. Seventy, eighty, whatever, they they just start racking up bills, or I I have no idea.
So so my?
But I mean, the idea here is. How are we going to get that clarity? Either tonight or in next month.
I I think what we would do is we would.
Planner would have to propose.
Yeah, right, we we have to give the planner, right, based on the parameters.
It's always going forward to find by the word.
Correct, yeah.
The only thing I would add is. And we talked about it here, the public input piece, I think you need to have the planner. Put in time that's required, not just to do the survey and review the survey, but. The public hearings, and there's some open houses you need to do.
Agreed.
And meet with the business association, whatever those, whatever that may be. Because that's when the hours start adding up, so at least if we have.
Yeah, that that was one of my my.
And answer the question, but yeah, the answer was to really express directly. You can find out what with regard to updating on the affordable housing, once you have your numbers, you can probably have them there. I think you have to get the other numbers from your planner.
And and just if I, if I can, just for two seconds, right, because I think. This is the guiding principle of. Our codes, right, so this is sort of the the grand vision of the town.
For our vision for the next ten years.
Right, that's right, and and what we want, and I think, at least my sense anyway. In reviewing ninety one and this is that. You know, many of these principles remain. There are some that have been satisfied, some that have been partially satisfied, and some that have been untouched. There are things that probably don't belong in here any longer, right, and there are some things that I think we probably ought to add, but when I review this. My general sentiment was. That. Many of the principles are in the right place here. And I think where the misses have been is. Clarification and execution, so I don't think that they've been translated from the vision here into our codes. Right, so I think I think there are two different things there, and 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 that's not going to dictate. The the difference between a reexam or a rewrite, that's. Post that, right, that's what happens, you know, we we can rewrite brand new and not implement anything, and what do we do? Right, so, you know, which I think has probably happened over over the course of time in certain, um to a certain extent. So I think that there's. Probably good and a lot of material in here that we can review and. And amend to be fiscally responsible, and I also think. The deeper that we dissect this. And the more attention we pay to it, the better direction we can give to the planner, which allows them to work a whole lot more efficiently. So I think that, you know, we take it upon ourselves to really look critically at this stuff and. And use the resources when we need them, I think we can probably accomplish. Both, right, I think we can probably get the things that we need in here, or the town needs in here, or want in here. And still be mindful of the dollar spend. So. You know, I don't think that we should compromise the desired vision. Or dollars if it's required. I'm just not so sure it calls for it. I think there's probably enough here to work with and expand all to be able to keep it tighter. And I think it may be somewhere in between, right, I think if it's a reexam. At thirty, like you said, I think that's the, you know, that's your fee to player. And then it becomes. How off the rails or within the, correct, as we guide through it.
The 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 point I was trying to make, and maybe didn't do it eloquently enough, is is that. The thirty thousand is the entry fee called, and if we start the entry fee at a hundred and forty, or whatever that number is going to be. I feel like a lot of that money is not going to go. Or it's not going to be as targeted as we're going to want it, and so if we start at the sort of. Sort of, hey, Mike, we're doing a reexam. And here's the parameters we want you to to to, you you know, propose around. We certainly can expand that, and then as we, and then if if we feel it's necessary. And then as we get into each of these elements, e- especially the land use and the things around the business district. You know, if we need extra, like, I'd rather have the money spent on that than somebody burning hours on. You you know, writing the first twenty pages of introductory material to the, to the, to the nineteen ninety one plan. It's like, it 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 becomes more of like targeted money spent on going deeper into each of the components. So that we get the right outcome.
Yeah, and I think, you know, Frank, you bring us some great points, Sean, you bring us some great points, and and Andrew, you bring us some great points too. Listen, it's been thirty four years since we did our last update, it's been ten years since, well, nine years since we've done our last reexamination. I think the best way to go into this is basically with an informed conscious needs versus wants. Getting an idea, bringing Michael Sullivan in as far as setting up the parameters of what's available. I think, you know, that that would be my approach, and if I was sitting in the same seats that you were, that'd be my approach, bring the planner in as far as determining. What's available to us, and again, how things were done ten years ago, and not how they're done today, and how things were done thirty four years ago, or certainly how they're done today. As far as what options we have available, so we can take a look at, and you know, and then come back and take a look at, and again. As the borough administrator, I'm happy to be partner with you in all of this process, or whatever you need, but I think. That's probably the best way to approach it as far as what options are available, and again, working with our planner, working with our engineer. Having an informed conscience as far as, you know, what's going to work best for the borough, and see what move over there. Putting a price tag on anything is tough when you don't know needs versus wants as far as what what menu is available as far as, so I think that'd be our next move.
I I think any, like, uh putting a six. Figures dollar on this is like, it's a nonstarter, like, that's not a value, like, like, I mean, what are we talking about?
I that's not. I don't think that should be your discussion here, I think your discussion should be.
But it's, but it's, but it's a transfer, but it's a transfer of time, right, we're saying. If we, we've been talking about this for six months, we've all kind of believed that this is a valuable use of our time. So we're trying to decide to get to the outcome we're trying to get to, how much of that time is going to go to someone we're going to pay? Versus how much is is going to be our own invested volunteer hours, plus maybe others that are going to volunteer up? That's great. The, I come back to the same thing, which is, how do we get to the point where we? Get that quote, get that ball rolling, because I look at the, I look at the meeting notes, and we're doing land use, housing, circulation, blah, blah, blah. That doesn't seem any smaller than what was in the nineteen ninety one. Master plan, like, all the same topics we're still touching, so. Six topics, thirty thousand dollars, I'm saying five thousand dollars, if it's an update to do the, you know, the the current update to do the. Affordable housing, if that's in the five to ten range.
Probably, right.
Then, you know, each one of these chapters is going to be five to ten. Unless we guide something different, and I guess what I'm looking for is I don't have that expertise, I don't have that information to guide someone to say. How do I tell you what you need to know to come back and tell me how much time that person, that professional needs to do these five, these six topics?
Yes, I I think that. Yes, I, I think that's where, like, like, that's why we have to, I, I guess, kind of get started, right? That's why I think we bring Michael Sullivan into the next meeting and say, okay, Michael, here are the, the elements that we're gonna, we're gonna tackle. Here's the, like, the general playbook of, of how we see, uh, of how we see us moving forward to each of those elements. What is that gonna cost? And I, I think I would prefer to spend more money on, I, I mean, maybe we don't need to have that discussion now, but I, I would prefer to spend the dollars on expertise, like, like, I, I envision somebody on the, the planning board quarterbacking each of, of the, the elements, right? And being able to obtain within a, within a reasonable, within reasonable goalposts, the appropriate professionals' advice, other help that they need in order to execute what Mike Sullivan says we have to execute in order to, to bring each element to a, a conclusion that satisfies the requirements of, of.
Yeah, yeah. And, and bringing, and again.
Does that make sense? Does that?
That sounds great. Yeah.
Cause I, I don't know. I, I don't know. I mean, we, we use an example in the zoning.
He should be able to bid it for us. And you know, like, once he hears what we're looking to accomplish, once he knows the field, he's gonna be able to say, I've done this fifty times for fifty different towns. Here's what I think your window is there. And, and it's, you know, so I, we'll, we'll get the, we'll get the price.
Yeah. And I, and Sean brings up, Sean brings up a lot of great points, you know? We can't look at, we, we have to look at this far as, well, you know, what, what options are available. So, and I like exactly where Sean's coming from on that. And Michael Sullivan, again, he worked on the plan before, you know, again, he's our planner. That's the person who's gonna, who's gonna guide you. Some professional is gonna guide you in the best direction as far as, you know, what options are available. And then the work inside at that point, you like this or you not like this after being educated on it. Yeah. So.
You know, I'd submit that the, the concerns are materially similar to the twenty sixteen rewrite. And the process is materially similar in terms of survey and to recommendations. Uh, so to the point on Sullivan would be, I would ask him, okay, what did it cost in sixteen? I'd ask him what it cost in oh five, cause I think you read it the oh five as well.
Correct, yes.
Um, and what's, has there been any change in our billing? And then it's that, and just put, yeah, put that to him like, and then we, uh, right to your point, then we can then with the, you know, what the top issues on the board are.
Yeah.
But you can get more fundamental than that. Mike, when does someone do a whole, whole new report versus just to reexamine? Why would we do that here?
I think we have, we have him here in Ju-, wasn't he here in July or September?
He was in August or September. He was here.
I don't know. Missed one, right?
And he.
So we had him here, he sat here and we had that, we asked that same question.
He, he came, yeah. So this is my point, Chris.
He was talking about that.
To everybody.
He's on the left.
I, the, the. His first question to me, when I, when I say we want you to do an estimate, sure, I'm sorry, is, okay, are you doing, are you rewriting the entire, are we, we starting from whole clock here? Or are we gonna do a reexamine? And, and so I think we have to have that, but like, I, I know it's kind of a fungible, it, it's, it's not a, a black and white kind of definition, but I kind of feel like we're in the re, we're, we're gonna select certain elements that we feel need the most attention based on, on what progress has been made since the last reexamination.
Can I make one suggestion?
Yes.
And again, Doug, correct me if I'm wrong on this one, as far as procedure. And maybe, maybe a suggestion be as a chair, maybe you make a master plan committee, point people, again, obviously it does not meet a forum. And we can have a meeting with Michael Sullivan prior to, and then we can have the layout what those points are. And again, you as the chair, you can appoint it and again, Doug, follow the regular procedure.
I think that's fine.
I think that's probably a good idea. Point people doesn't meet a forum. We meet together with me and Michael Sullivan, get an idea. We set it up as far as what our parameters are. And then we can come back and have a presentation to the board as far as what we're looking for. Again, it gives us that informed conscience on whether we're gonna go for, you know, reexamine or we're gonna go for a full update. And then, but again, Doug brings up a great point too. How many times is a report completely rewritten? Not a lot. There's, there's always, there's always.
He did say that.
That, that you can't.
I agree. I agree. I would add one extra. If the master plan basically lays out the vision, gives direction to mayor and council and says, look, we're good for here. Here's where we'd like to, and this is where the zoning board reports have informed you. We still need to do some tweaking here, so we need some ordinance changes here. And the third part, you know, those are your first two elements. Your third part, your third element, which is, which is the bane of every land use board existence is, is enforcement. We still find, you know, may, maybe, we still find that though we have things on the books in many instances, sometimes it's not getting, it's not getting looked at. And how can we make it easier for our enforcement folks to have those things? We've already done some things like that with regard to checklist. We want things, a- a- and we can inform those by simply saying, uh, just a line, you know, our, our checklist needs to have a couple more items put on for people to tell us what they're doing. Um, and then it helps you enforce them.
Sheila, Sheila is a quorum four or five?
This four and five.
It's five. Okay. So, so we have, so we, we can only have meetings with four people present. Okay.
Well, you, you can have, which otherwise you have to advertise.
Otherwise you have to advertise and invite people. Yeah.
I don't know that that's productive discussion with the contractual aid up.
Yeah, yeah.
If you're just outlining something that you're going to eventually bring before the whole board anyway. It's just a matter of being more efficient as to who can, who can have me.
Doug, do we, do, I was gonna bring this to the question. So do we need to decide tonight? Are we doing a reexam?
No, I don't think so. I think we should decide by next month. Sorry.
Well, so, so. I'm putting out there, you know, finish the question. Like, I guess I'm open to stating that. So you have that information. So when you go talk to Mike, you could say the board is.
Yeah. So, so I think what we're deciding is we're gonna, we're gonna get a meeting together with, I, I would argue myself, Andrew, Dave, and one other person. So that would mean we don't have a quorum. We'll meet with Chris and with Michael in the very near future, hopefully within the next week or week and a half. And have a more sort of expanded discussion so that we can decide exactly what he needs to bid on or exactly the parameters around with which he can then come to the next planning board meeting, present a couple of different fee structures. Um, and, and then we can, then at that point, I would think we can adopt or at least say, okay, we're doing, you know, fee structure A and, and then we can get rolling.
Yeah. I would just like to add just one thing. I think probably a good thing to be fee structure, but also a menu of options as far as fee gap.
Yeah.
I wouldn't want.
That's, that's what I meant.
Yeah. I wouldn't want somebody to look solely at fees.
No, no, I didn't even, I didn't. That's not what I meant by fee structure. I meant like a, a proposal for each scenario. Yeah. So we can make a decision. Exactly. Based on both. Yeah.
And, and to Mike's point, he's done it for the town twice.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hourly rates may have changed, but it's simple. In oh five, how many hours did you spend? In sixteen, how many hours can you spend? And by the way, you have ten other towns that have sixty five hundred people in them. How many hours do you spend on average to do a reexam versus a rewrite? And then what's your current hourly rate? And it becomes mad. And, you know, we'll, we'll be somewhere in the window. I mean, I think we can get that answered. And, and I think we'll know roughly what the cost is gonna be and how much we're gonna be able to do in there, right? So I, I think we'll be able to answer that pretty easily and quickly and then determine which way.
One question for Doug. Um, given what we've learned recently through, um, M and M, through fair share in the last turn, through the Duncan discussions. Does having a old master plan expose us to any pinhole liabilities in terms of saying, hey, you know, fair, even you can't, you know, while your ordinance says this, you know, and or your master plan is dictating that, you haven't really properly reexamined it, you know, a long time. I know this is sort of rhetorical question, but is there any, any pinhole risk there? That somebody. I, I, I don't see it, Ben. And the, the points that you raise, M and M was an issue where perhaps we didn't have all of our documents in a row, and we were not up to speed with what we needed to be with the affordable housing. Had nothing to do with your master plan.
Right.
It was, it was a matter of making sure that you had a plan that was acceptable. You were, you were not as up to speed as you should have, which is what we're trying to do with them. Duncan Donuts was, was nothing wrong with your master plan. It was an inter-, and, and there was nothing wrong with your ordinances. At the end of the day, there was nothing wrong with your ordinances. It was a challenge to the interpretation of those ordinances, which in each and every case, the objectors lost. Didn't make the process less cumbersome. What I think we've learned more than anything else in the, in, and I think that Duncan Donuts was more instructive in this aspect was that people in the municipality, it were in, in your borough, there was a contingent of like, this is not the kind of use we want to see in the borough. And the response was, well, your ordinances allowed for that. And a- 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 and I guess, a- and I guess at the end of the day was a lack of understanding of what was permitted. And the applicant coming in and saying, look, I designed everything to meet your ordinances as to what was permitted. If you don't want that, then you have to change your ordinances. But again, it wasn't, it wasn't, um, it wasn't a master plan issue. It was an interpretation of what's a restaurant. And they fit in that definition of what's a restaurant and the objectors didn't want that. And the, and the other issue was that we, that we learned, and I, and again, I would, it was recommended to us from the zoning board. There was an entire report of restaurants and those types of things, which I think we should probably get hold of, get out to members. Because the idea of trying to define, quite frankly, fast food
Yep.
has significantly changed over the past twenty years. When you're, when you're talking about, in many instances, something, and again, I'm not picking on Duncan Donuts. You know, when someone said, well, we don't want something that's quick, prepared and left, and you just come and pick it up. It's like, well, okay, then that takes out a remon pop pizza place also. And that's not what you wanted. And the idea that now kitchen consists of a very small refrigeration unit, a sink and a warning entity. And, you know, the idea of what constitutes fast food, the old definitions of, well, you know, we know it when we see it, trying to define that and saying, well, we don't want that and make that constitution sound. It's again, not a master plan issue. It's, it's, it's how we structure our ordinances. But if we make the, sort of take a survey, make the interest of the town against what the master plan revisions are, it doesn't matter if that's anchored to a nineteen ninety one, um, sort of, you know, source document, right? That's. I, 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 I can't say in every instance. I mean, if something, if, if something in the nineteen ninety one source document is flat out wrong there, then, then we're S O L situation of luck. Um, but, but I, I don't see that. I mean, I'm trying to envision a situation of, the way I look, the way I'm trying to respond to your question is how would I challenge your master plan right now?
Right.
I don't know that I, having reviewed that a number of times, I don't know that there's a challengeable base. You challenge it more on procedural grounds, failure to do the reexam or interpretive issue on one of your ordinances. I'm willing to be the senior. It's not a point that I'm, I wanna, you know, it's not a point that I guess I'm looking to make as much as, you know, are we missing some element where somebody, I mean, could come into town and push something, put a target in the, you know, in the shopping plaza on the basis of something that, you know, saying the ninety one master plan is too old for these. I'm sure it's, I'm spurious, Doc, I'm not using people's time over, right? It's just something to think about. Because the reexamination report, again, it's, it's more of a living document. I, I would say, you could think of it more in terms of a constitution where you have amendments. We have rewritten our master plan since nineteen ninety one. We've rewritten.
Yep.
We've done it, but through the reexamination process. We have added the resource inventory. That was a rewrite. We have done the affordable housing, changed the engine zone. That was a rewrite. Think of it as an amendment to that underlying document. And where, where certain things are no longer applicable, as, as was raised before, we redline that.
Yep.
We redline that and write that new. So I, 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 it's, I still see it as a living document. It's not something that, and that's what the reexamination report, that's what the reexamination process is intended to be. Not to have this master plan that sits on the shelf and gets dusted and we never look at it again, but to pull it down. Not gonna change the history, not gonna change a lot of things, but with, when you get to some of the nuts and bolts of the land use, circulation patterns, I think you're gonna see, you know, those types of things, your resources as to what you do for, for your conservation, you're gonna see some changes there. And what we're gonna do in a sense is redline that master plan and add new language into it. So it's sort of a living, breathing document through our reexamination.
So, um, okay. So I think we have a good path forward now. Um, in terms of, of getting an estimate and then actually getting started. And so, Chris, I, I, I'll, I'll be in touch with you
Yep.
tomorrow. And, and let's get, um, a few dates that work for everybody. Um, and we'll get, we'll, we'll, we'll meet, um, up by your office and.
Yep. Absolutely. Send me, let me know who's gonna be on the committee and I'll, uh, collaborate with Mike Sullivan.
So we need one more person. So it's, Andrew, if you'd like to continue that, it'd be great. Dave, is that, okay, I'll, I'll go. And then we need one other person. Jim? Okay. Good. So we've got our, um, and so, so should we, we don't need to roll call that, do we?
No.
No? Okay.
You can just send me, uh, email with everybody's contacts.
I will. Um, and then the other thing, I, I don't know that we need to address it tonight. But as I said, we've lost, um, we lost Neil. So, so we have the, the circulation pieces current, currently has, has no sponsor and, and the conservation recreation and open space uh, was David and, and Betsy. And so again, we have no sponsor there. And so we'll, we'll need, we don't have to decide that tonight. Like we, if, if somebody wants to think about whether they wanna do it or not, uh, over the, like, would it be nice to, to sort of understand who's gonna quarterback those elements? Are there any volunteers? Do we have any volunteers?
Circulating.
Okay. Thanks, Ann.
And then we're really working in the E C about this.
I volunteered last meeting for the, uh, conservation recreation open space, but I was, I was turned down.
Good.
So can I, uh, can I volunteer again?
Why are you turned down? I, I wasn't here, so it wasn't.
It's in the minutes. I was redirected elsewhere.
Okay, good. So we got that. Okay, good. Thanks, sir.
Thanks, guys. Persistence.
Attrition.
Patience.
Um, I, I don't have anything else unless there's other elements we wanna talk about.
The, uh, I'm just curious what the hottest topics were in the zoning meeting on this. And I'm curious about, and I'm sorry to do this, um, what the, uh, what that, that examination, the most applications for variances? I'm super curious about that. I guess in a minute.
So they, they have an annual report that they put together, which has all of that information in it. And then in terms of this, the, the thing that we talked about most at the zoning was the, was the, um, uh, the business district. And, and that was, I mean, right, guys? I think that got the most attention in the zoning meeting was, was, I mean, that's really all we kinda talked about. We touched on affordable housing.
Did you, did you get the twenty twenty three report out to the members?
Twenty twenty three is not out to the members because it's still in draft.
Still in draft.
So they're gonna go at, uh, back to it at their next meeting and hope to approve it. And at which point I can distribute the chapter.
Okay. I mean, I, I think the, so that you, I thought the annual, I thought this one's, this annual report was very helpful. There's some summaries at the back by way of which, which zones get the most hits, what variances usually come up, um, those types of things and a breakdown of it. So, and, and I, I, I don't know that there's gonna be a significant difference other than some, I think what they wanted to do was, was notate that though there are variances granted, and I think this is an important point to make here, though there are variances granted, probably about, I, and I wanna say about ninety percent of them, maybe closer to ninety three percent of them, they're significantly massaged. So that while a person comes in for side yard, maybe a D variance, um, maybe a front yard setback. At the end of the day, sometime in many instances, the D variance disappears. They, the applicant gets a sense of the board says, look, I'm, we're gonna retool this. We're gonna come back. The D variance disappears. Suddenly the impervious surface is, is reduced. Suddenly the side yard setback is, you know, the, the encroachment is, is reduced. So that though there are some, and they wanted to make that clearer, that the variances are granted. What was initially asked for does not have a reflection as to what's ultimately granted and is greatly reduced. And I think that's, I think that's really the only change that they're doing with the board.
And in terms of how to present that data and make it, um, you know, just easier to read and more standardized. So I think those are. You know, just easier to read and more standardized, so I think those are kind of just a few tweaks that are supposed to happen in the next couple of years. So they can adopt it and distribute it.
But by and large, we can get that out to you, and I think it's very helpful document, I think it's it's well written.
And it's twenty twenty-three, cuz they're a little just behind, but uh, with the intent to start working on twenty twenty-four. Now, and not waiting to be here, so hopefully that will follow, not too far after, there was some significant data.
I I I I get a sense from the folks that that really, they really retooled, great deal of assistance from Sheila. In this instance, so that the the twenty twenty-four report should probably be streamlined out pretty quickly.
And and clearer in its tracking, there's gonna be sort of less ambiguity categorically between them, they they were, they're trying to get. Clearer to understand what those variances are that they're granting often, so they can see if anything needs to be rewritten. It seemed like they were drilling down into an assist on that was pretty thoughtfully done. So it'd be interesting to see it all on paper.
Yeah, I. Close. We don't have any, we don't have any applications coming down. Oh, yeah, that might be a good a good thing to talk about, any uh, any, anything in the, on the radar, Sheila?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, it was just determined that this, and we have the good application of the.
We haven't sent that out formally, it's still being discussed, um.
So is that the, that's the.
Maybe.
We have, we have one pending application. For um, change of use.
Bro, I'm sorry, change of use.
Change of use.
And and which, what what is that for?
It's for a. Restaurant slash takeout type establishment.
Okay.
So they, they submitted, we did a review, they've made some changes. We've been working with landlord, just met their attorneys, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's not ready for us yet, is it, do do we know like roughly what?
Submission recently, they made some changes, so it's still in completion.
So do we know what, like, would it be next meeting or the meeting after, you think? If you had to guess, we'll know you to it, obviously.
Um, it's, we're still reviewing it. It might be a jurisdictional issue.
Okay. So, good.
So that's one of our planner waiting on, I saw the email.
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Yeah.
No, I mean, it's, it's, to listen in front of you, we shouldn't.
Yeah, we shouldn't talk, okay, fair, fair.
Other than to know what's coming down.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was just in terms of like, if we're gonna have, like, like, I I envisioned that the planning, I I'm sorry, the master plan discussion with Michael Sullivan. In a formal meeting will probably take up a fair amount of time, and to have to review an application in that meeting, and I know. I I guess there's this application, I know there's the other application, which has got a lot of attention, the the the, is that the seafood one? So it's one of the same, like, that's gonna be one that there's gonna probably be a fair amount of discussion and presentation materials on, right, I would imagine.
If it comes.
If it, if it comes, right, so I I feel like to have to do the the master plan and an application in one meeting is not gonna, not gonna work. So I just wanted to try and get a beat on, uh. Okay.
Well, it's still under.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. Fair enough, that's all good, okay.
Uh, other question I have was, do you, do we have any further progress at Sunoco site, is there any, anything from them? Like, I know this is all neatly tied up the bow and they're, we're like, ready to receive this. Affordable housing, you know, completed building, right, so. Have you heard anything?
We finished everything on our end, all resolution compliance, and. Sent everything out, I sent a text to one of their directors of engineering, I haven't heard anything back. Just say, hey, you know, any timeline, where are we?
Next, next question, is this a risk to us from an affordable housing, like, required?
Okay.
We've approved a plan, they just haven't acted on it, and that's.
There's nothing more for you to do. Unless you, unless you, unless you wanna get some overalls, go out there.
What is the approval on the laps?
They they have a period of time in which, i- i- in this instance, I mean, they've got like a two-year window. Um, right, cuz we did a site plan approval, uh, we've granted some variances, if you don't execute on your variances. You know, there is a lapsing time period then, but.
And it was all tied to the settlement agreement, so.
Yeah, but the the, the difficulty that you have in this instance is it's not just straight approval, it's a settlement document from the court.
But it is time.
I don't know that there is a time limit in the settlement document or any basis for you to go for enforcement of the against rights, so. To answer your question, I don't think we're in trouble with affordable housing. To to try to respond to your question, I don't believe that there's a timeline in settlement, could I have a good document? And we, you know, you can make a call to Mr. Edwards on that, he would have that probably at his fingertips.
That couldn't be, that that sort of permit to do that project, M and M, that couldn't be transferred to a third party, couldn't? Could it be sold?
Depends on the settlement document, in many instances, there is a transfer that's, that's. You usually permit that, and the person who steps in their shoes. Um, has is obliged to comply with all of those. It's done, it's done with some degree of frequency, yeah. You know, someone comes in, gets the approvals, it then has value. And then sells it to another developer, which is why in many instances, in your resolutions. I try to put in language and try to get concessions from the developer that says. You're telling us now that with these variances, there's no basis to need any additional variances, it can be built that way. And then, by not to get whipsawed when you do the other companies, there's just no way we can build this because we need it, so you know. We have these concessions, again, they could prove their case for hardship or those types of things, there might be a basis. But nine times out of ten, you try to make sure it's done once it leaves us.
Yeah. There's no consent on transfer or anything like that, so then I had to just decide the settlement.
I would have to, I'd, I'd have to review the document. I I I just, I, I've got about a number of resolutions in my head, I don't have that one.
It it will be really, really unusual at any language like that in there. Right. It will be really, really restrictive, most developers wouldn't accept it, especially in the instance that this arose, which was. At the threat of builder's rent, he had a whole lot of power.
Yeah.
There's very small likelihood that any of that got put in there, and and the truth is. Any new developer is gonna be obligated to build it per the approvals, and they're not gonna come in front of. The zoning board, trying to get some variances, because it's like, it's gonna be prohibited for them from a call standpoint, so they're not gonna do it, generally speaking. Not always, but.
And again, I I'm, I have some level of comfort that it's done, done, because not only was it. We reviewed it after the settlement documents from the court, so I, you've kind of got a balance suspenders as much as you possibly can. When it's gonna get done.
The only thing that was not, it was, it was a site plan, so. The commercial space, there were not specific uses spelled out, so.
Yeah.
His risk is really if we changed permitted uses, parking required, well, parking was even kind of tied to some of that.
Parking was pretty much tied.
Really, the, the, um.
Yeah.
You know, what's allowed in that zone, if if we made some drastic changes, that may cut out.
Yeah.
Half of his.
I mean, I I I can't see any change with regards to residential home, but again, developer wasn't, and it wouldn't be unusual. For a developer to be able to tell you, yeah, I know that we're gonna have this here and this here and these commercial spaces, again. If it's conforming. Take a blank unless there was some issue that it's gonna blow out your parking requirements, I don't see it coming back to affordable.
His real risk would be if he got any grant or public money for the affordable units that he's putting in. Those have very strict timelines that you have to adhere by, so he would have to pay for the cost of those units. I, and and there were only a couple, so I don't know that he even got any funds for that, maybe he did, but that that's really where his risk would be.
Oh, yes, uh, any comments from members of the public? No, uh, anybody on online that we need to? Great, I'll move, uh, I'll move to close. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
You. Rich. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.